Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Gaston City Council meeting. At this time, the City Council, I'll call on the city clerk to have the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is absent. He is listening by remote means today. Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson is also absent today. He's listening remotely. Councilman Cannon is also absent but is listening remotely. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, during this time, we just ask for your continued protection and blessing on our families and on our city and our county. Father, please be with the families that have lost loved ones. Please be with the families that have loved ones that are sick. We ask you to have special blessings on them. Also, our frontline people, our healthcare workers and our caregivers, our police and firemen, and our medics, people that are in harm's way, Father, we just ask for your protection as you're the only protection, Father, that we can truly have. Father, we lift up our city to you. We ask you for wisdom and guidance today as we make decisions and carry on the business of the city. Father, we just ask you to keep everyone safe and, Father, for this pandemic to pass sooner rather than later. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone who are watching us on Facebook Live or listening by telephone. Our meeting will also be accessible on your YouTube and Gaston TV. I want to emphasize the importance of complying with the EMA and the CDC guidelines to make sure your information comes from reliable source. Social distancing and adhering to the governor's stay-at-home order is crucial to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 in our state and in our city, and we're fighting a pandemic that is very real and will affect all of us in some way. That being said, government is essential. I want to commend our city employees who are working every day to ensure the safety and well-being of our citizens. The council was elected by you to represent your best interests. We're here working to conduct the business of the city and to provide the tools needed by the administration to continue essential services. At this time, I recognize Mrs. Deborah Gaither from the Emergency Management Agency to provide us with an update on our local COVID-19 situation.
Is that it? Okay. Well, I came last week giving you all an update and did it with hopes of betterment, that I would bring better news this week, but that is not what has happened. So I'm here today to give an update that does not sound well at all for us. We follow several statistics along the way, and one for all of Etowah County right now that is on uncast.com says that we are at a D minus in Etowah County for social distancing, which that's measured by GPS and by receipt of sales across our county. So a D minus is not a good number to have on this type of graph. Also, this morning, as I woke up, we were listed in the top five with the most cases and the most deaths in the state of Alabama. That's not a top five we want to be on. This weekend, and then again this morning, I've received a total of seven death notifications. Those are emails that we don't want to get. I hate to sound so dismal, but there is hope if we can just social distance. You know, if you're not doing it for yourself, do it for your family. If it's not your family, do it for those employees that are on the front lines, your nurses, your doctors, your first responders. Do it for the nursing home providers, the assisted living providers, whatever it takes, whatever your passion is, do it for that reason. We want to help the Etowah County, and to do that, we're gonna have to take some drastic measures between now and April 30th. One death was one too many, and now, as we continue on to add deaths to that count, is disheartening every day. I had a conversation with a little boy who his family is non-English speaking, but he could speak English, so he called me, and his words to me were, "Deborah, does my daddy have it a little or a lot?" And when I had to answer that question to that little boy, I realized how severe this is getting. We have got to do a better work at education, and we need to do it across the board with our non-English speaking partners, too, that live here in Etowah County. So we need to make sure that we're sharing everything that we have in Spanish also. So let's all work together on doing that. Some good things that are happening are people coming together. McDonald's still is a drop-off point. Even if you don't go into their location, just call them on the phone and tell them, "I'm dropping supplies off outside your door." The supplies are being used for the hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living, your first responders, and those supplies are needed. I think I said last week, maybe you purchased one too many cans of disinfectant spray. Maybe you purchased one too many Clorox wipes or disinfectant wipes. If so, drop it all. You don't realize how bad it's needed. We no longer are getting supplies from the state. That stockpile is depleted. So we have already spent over $43,000, just as our agency, in purchasing those items that are needed, and filled 138 requests for those throughout the county, not just the city, but throughout the county. Once this shipment that we receive here, we've been told it'll be four to six weeks before we can receive another shipment. So we've had to make the decision today of how we will organize our distribution of supplies, and this is the first time I've shared this, except for with the staff, so I just want everybody to know how we are going to organize the distribution of supplies from this day forward. First will be hospitals. Second will be first responders. Third will be nursing homes. Fourth, assisted living facilities. Five, home health. Six, volunteer organizations. And seven will be listed, those that don't fit in any of those categories but under other. So that's how we will be distributing from this point forward. If you're a parent at home and you need a sympathetic ear while you're there with your children, there's a number that you can call now and a website that you can visit, and I encourage you to do so. The number is 866-962-3030. And that's just to get a little information or just to have a sympathetic ear. And you can also visit the website, which is pal.us.edu. That's P-A-L dot U-S dot E-D-U. That's some good information. You can visit feedingalabama.org. We've also put out some locations that will be feeding individuals throughout this month on our Facebook page today, so you can visit that. There's a list of about 10. The call volume for food need has began to rise as unemployment and those other things have not kicked in yet. Some are still waiting for their first unemployment check after two or three weeks. They're behind. So if you need help and assistance, you can visit feedingalabama.org, call 211, first call for help, and they have a list of locations that are feeding, and they can also share other helpful information for you and your family while you are staying at home. Right now, we were still, and when I left the office, we were still at 42 cases confirmed with three confirmed deaths and others still being investigated. In Alabama today, we topped over 2,000 confirmed. We are 2,035 just a short while ago. I think that's all the news that I have that needs to be shared right now. I'm sure you all have maybe some questions or want to know a few things. If so, please let me know.
I don't know if you can have the answer to this, but it's been on the news that the Surgeon General said that this week would be a very, he put it in reference to Pearl Harbor. Do you know what that reference meant, or do you, can you expound on that?
Right. Our Department of Public Health had shared that with us earlier, and that means a dismal week for the state of Alabama to include Etowah County, and it means more deaths, more spread. That's why it's so important to stay home and stay away from others. At one point in time, we were told that Alabama could see upwards of 5,000 deaths by August the 4th contributed to this virus. So, you know, we want to stop it, and we want to stop it now so we never get near that number. So between now and April 30th are our key times to see that we don't go past, you know, May, June dealing with this, that we certainly don't go past August. So all the more reason that I encourage you to please, please encourage others to social distance, to wash their hands, to encourage their children to do it. Once again, I saw a group of children on the way here, 12, playing, you know, without any adult supervision. Parents, please, please, if you love your children, please have them at home, have them supervised. Give them instruction. You know, if a child doesn't have instruction, they don't know what to do. They don't know that they might be doing something that can make someone sick. So give your children instruction about this pandemic.
Another question is, with the governor's stay-at-home, how is that enforced or can it be enforced?
It can be enforced in various ways. It depends on exactly what the complaint is. So if there's a complaint about a nonessential business being opened or about a COVID-positive patient not staying isolated, call your local law enforcement. They can guide you on which way that it needs to be directed to.
What about people gathering up at the Falls or people gathering somewhere?
I would say call your local law enforcement also and tell them where the group is meeting and ask them if they have someone that can go and disperse that group.
Okay.
Deborah, if we don't, I was noting that Governor of New York, it used to be $500 fine. Yesterday, he increased that to $1,000 fine.
Right.
So that ought to wake somebody up. Our biggest thing is enforcing it once that's set, which I don't really is not. So sooner or later, we're gonna have to set a fine of something.
Absolutely, I agree.
Because people are not, they're gonna congregate.
And there are still businesses that are, that we consider nonessential that are still open, so people are, people are still going because they're, they're going to the grocery store, they're going to services, they're going to a lot of businesses.
Yeah, and the grocery, most of our grocery stores around here will pack, and you can do curbside pickup. They will pack and deliver. So, you know, do the delivery, do the curbside pickup. Don't stroll through the grocery store. This is a time to pick up essentials. When I was talking to my grandchildren, I tried to explain to them the difference in a want and a need. Do you really need this, or do you just want it? And if you just want it, it can wait, but if you need it, we'll help you find a way to get it.
With Ben's question, Councilman Reed, when I was watching the governor's news conference, the Attorney General for the state said it's a $500 fine for each time they catch you out. So it's enforceable with the $500 fine. And okay, and then let me go back to the order that you're giving the equipment out. The hospital is number one. Does that include like the healthcare, like clinics around Gaston also, because I didn't hear you say that in there?
The doctor's offices?
Yeah, maybe like Quality of Life, you know, places like that.
We've not had any requests from our local doctor's offices, and specifically, we haven't received one from the Quality of Life, but they will fall under healthcare providers.
Yes.
Deborah?
Some places have.
Hey, this is Councilman Williams. If I, if you might, could you please reemphasize the need for people to not hoard supplies and food, in particular, because of the impact that that's gonna potentially have on those who don't have the discretionary income to go out and buy in bulk? We have a lot of poor people that can't afford to go out there and hoard themselves, so they're paycheck to paycheck, and they just don't have the ability to go out, and by the time that they can purchase, many of them have, or encounter a situation where there's no food or supplies left for.
Right, and I, I only heard part of that, but I believe, first part of your question, she didn't get it. We didn't get it.
So again, Deborah, if you would reemphasize the need for people to not hoard.
Absolutely.
When they are purchasing supplies and food, in particular, because of the impact that that could have on poor people that are living from paycheck to paycheck or may not have the resources to go out and purchase in bulk.
Absolutely. We put that on one of our posts this morning for the food distribution. Only take what you need. Only take what you need, leave what else is there for others. We don't need to hoard food. We're not planning months and months of this. We just want to get through and break this climb of the virus spreading. So you don't need to plan for three, six months right now. Just take a need, not a want, but a need. That way, when those who are living paycheck to paycheck or don't get the assistance that they need until once a month, when they go, there'll still be items on the shelf that they can purchase and have for their family, too. Yes.
I was gonna ask Deborah about, I've seen on some reports in some cities where, like grocery stores are being limited to half of their capacity. Like if you've got capacity for 200 people, then you can only have 100, and then they're only letting in like 50 at a time. Is that something you see that we should be doing or could be doing here?
Absolutely. If you own a business that you're allowing the public into, I believe it's the business's responsibility to count your square footage minus your shelving and then figure out how many people you can have in there every six feet, and don't allow any more in until some have dispersed. Even if you go to a store, it is still six feet apart. So every business should be counting their square footage minus shelving or whatever else may be on the floor, and then counting what floor space they have, and then figuring how many people they can put in there six feet apart.
Along those lines, Walmart is doing an excellent job. You, they only let so many people in at a time, and you can only get one item of certain items. They won't not let you get more than one.
And they have stepped up their game, yes, they have.
They really have, so I want to commend them.
Yes. Yes.
I guess maybe we could just make that as a, as a point of concern and to ask local stores to do that, if they have any problem doing that calculation, is that something that EMA can help with?
We do our best, yes. We do our best to find that for them.
All right. Thanks.
Ms. Gaither, we thank you. We thank you for what you're doing, and we just continue to look forward to you giving us updates of what's going on in our county and in our city. Thank you.
Do you need anything? Is anything we could do to help you?
No, sir, we need a little rest. That would be good if we could get that this weekend. We would love to spend Easter with our family, so everybody stay at home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll continue with our business. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held on March 24th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to approve the minutes, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve the minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 20th through the 26th and March 27th through April 2nd.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
There is no proclamations, unfinished business. Our first item, no action is necessary regarding a resolution ordering the abatement of nuisance on property at 1158 Litchfield Avenue in District 1, and the nuisance has been abated by the owner. Our next item is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 921 Avenue F in District 3, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on March 3rd. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I'm gonna ask for another 30-day table due to the situation that's going on. Give him a little more time.
Second.
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next item is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property, and this ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and it conveys half an acre parcel located off of Riverside Drive and College Parkway to Cook's Food of Gaston LLC, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
This ordinance, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution adopting analysis of impediment to fair housing choice, and this is to comply with HUD requirement to entitlement jurisdictions and is recommended by the Planning, Director, and Community Development Department. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is our first reading, and this is an ordinance that will be adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program fiscal year 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020 Annual Action Plan, and the 2020 Budget. This is the plan for the projected housing and community development needs from January 1, 2020 through May 31st, 2024. It adopts the fiscal year 2020 Action Plan to complete the goals of meeting the needs set forth in the Consolidated Plan, and it also adopts the fiscal year 2020 CDBG budget totaling $1,077,180 for the period from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it at its next meeting. We have some new business. Our first new business item is appointing members to the Airport Authority for a term expiring on July 31st, 2025. I'd like to move that we bring this up.
I'll ask for unanimous consent to consider from Legal Department, a 2020 Resolution 219, appointing members to the Airport Authority for terms expiring on July 31st, 2025, as unanimous consent. No? Okay. No, you just said no. Okay.
Get a. Question?
Question, yeah. I spoke with Mr. Williams, and he said he hadn't been notified and that he would like to stay on the board, so.
What, Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams is who we're considering.
That's who we're appointing.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Cunningham. I'm sorry. Mr. Cunningham that's one that's on there now, that he would be replacing.
So what is the question?
That's why I'm saying no, for it to come up today.
He just wants clarification later on.
Yeah.
We'll run it next week. Okay.
Okay, so I need to let the record show that unanimous consent has not been granted for consideration today.
Yes.
Okay. Our next new business is adopting the regulation for small cell technology facility in the city of Gaston, and this is an item that I'd like for the attorney to speak on.
Yes, Councilwoman Toles, as you know, we've discussed in council meetings, having an agreement with Verizon on placement of small cell towers. Right now, Verizon has not really responded because telecommunication companies are working with the state to pass a bill. The bill would be essentially that cities would get $100 for location, and we would have virtually no say-so on where those facilities would be placed. The current legislation at the state has the potential of being passed by May 1st. So we've got a notification from the League of Municipalities that the current bill allows for an exception, a grandfather provision if a city has an ordinance, and if the ordinances are in place before May 1. You know, as you know, in this current environment, there's no guarantee that the bill will ever come back up, or the legislature might, you know, reconvene to consider it. But the league has notified us that if we want to be grandfathered in, we probably need to pass an ordinance before May 1. And I will say this, that, you know, Verizon is still, you know, kind of not answering the call until, because I think they might still be optimistic of approval. I don't know. And previously, we talked about having an agreement, but since this, and the reason was, in states of Georgia and Mississippi, the state legislation that was passed in those states allowed a grandfather provision so long as an agreement was in place, and basically you have some constitutional protections for contracts, and that's what they would be. But since, you know, we don't have two parts to a contract, we prepared an ordinance for y'all to consider, and it'd be up to y'all if y'all want to consider. And it'd be up to y'all, if y'all want to consider it, and, and under new business adopted today, or wait. You know, I mean, because the legislature may or may not consider it this time around, and we might have more time to, to look at it differently. But what we've got in this ordinance is this ordinance pretty much tracks the FCC law. And that's the Federal Communications. And what's happening in the environment today is, is the United States is in a race with China to develop 5G countrywide. And so the FCC has, has come under and reg, and has passed a regulating rule that is being challenged in the not circuit, but it's the minimum guidelines in, in order to help telecommunications companies fast-track 5G. And what you'll see in here is we've got provisions, the two things in this ordinance which I think are important. There's number one, is it gives the city engineer, obviously the city, some, some ability to, to manage where these, these small cell towers would be placed. For example, if a telecommunications company says they need a small cell tower right here, then that, their opinion is backed up with their popu, or with their data. We can actually kind of monkey with them to say, well, can you put it, instead of right here, can you put it on this pole, or in this building? Or can we work out an agreement with, with Alabama Power Company over here, and see if we can put it on, on maybe your pole? We have that ability, and to some extent. Whereas if a state law, if this state law is passed, we would lose that ability, as they have in, in Georgia and Mississippi. Also, under this, you know, you have an application process where the city gets some, some money upfront on each, on each facility. And that's actually, you know, because there's a lot of work to be done on the city's part, as far as looking at the design, making sure the, the, whatever structure this facility's going to go on can handle the weight, and, and a lot of things. So that's the application process, which is a fee. It's laid out in this ordinance. And those fees are pretty much set by FCC rules. And also, they pay a yearly rate for the location, and our ordinance is $270. And under FCC law, as it exists, or regulations as exist today, that amount is, is, is the maximum that we can charge without challenge. And what I mean with that challenge, if, for example, we charged $450, like the city of Bestavia did, we would have to, and telecommunications companies can, can, can challenge our rate, say, why are you charging us that rate? At that point, we would have to go through an extensive evaluation of cost analysis basis, which we have done to, to come up with our rate, how we're charging this. And, you know, it's like the price of property in Bestavia versus price of property in Gaston. What our neighbor, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive study, which we don't have in place. And most, and according to our, our consultant on this, he said that, you know, 90, 95, 96% of the cities in Alabama don't have that in place. Bestavia happened to. And he, and he worked with them, and he said it was a long process, and they were able to get up to $450. So that's, and to give you some example, the state law in Georgia, like I said again, gives telecommunications companies pretty much free rein at $100 per location. And as of a few days ago, they were putting in over 1,000 poles in Sandy Springs, Georgia. And, and Sandy Springs turned around and issued a moratorium based on the coronavirus. But that's what's come. And also, you've got, I mean, some, some rates, like Arkansas, I think it's $30 a, a, a year, is what the rate is in Arkansas. So it varies from states, but what, what we're doing here with this ordinance is we're trying, you know, is I'm presenting to y'all as an opportunity to, to, you know, get ahead of this, and preserve some rights, not, your money's important, but preserve some rights on our ability to, to manage our right of ways in a, in a static manner. And, and I just wanted to, like, give this to y'all today, and present it to y'all. And I know I've been haggling with, with Mr. Williams over here in Alabama Power, he's had some concerns about it. And we've kind of worked through some of the issues, and I'm sure there's some more that we'll talk about. And I told Mr. Williams that, that we can always amend an ordinance or rescind an ordinance, and that, that, you know, my time here at the city has always been, we've always worked well with Alabama Power Company, and they've worked well with us. But anyway, we'll continue to work with them too, no matter what y'all do.
I, I think I understand that, May 1st, I understand that.
Yes.
Grandfathering, I think I got that. So basically, if we don't do something before 5/1, and the legislature goes and does their thing, we would be better off if we done it now, with the exception of the amount we're going to charge. And we get back in that calculating thing, how long would that take?
Right, and I don't know if we could come up above that threshold anyway.
No, I don't either.
And like I said, I mean, you know, y'all the decision makers, not me, but, you know, I think the ability to kind of manage to some extent the aesthetics of it is, is probably worth its weight in gold.
Well, if we don't control it, they're going to walk all over.
Yes.
No doubt.
But the legislature hasn't, they're not meeting right now. They don't meet until the 28th, right?
Correct, and, and I don't, I mean, you know, I don't know what they're going to consider. Now, I've heard that there, there's two items the legislature's going to consider, and this ain't one of them. But then, you know, I'm also thinking, well, we haven't heard back from, from the child communication company, so they're probably, they're at least holding out some optimism that it might be considered.
Yeah, but it's nothing to mean, now, it's nothing that we have to pass today.
Well.
I think it is.
We don't have to, I mean, you don't have to pass it today, but if we don't pass it by May, May 1st.
Yeah, we got.
And they, and, and, and the state legislature passes something, then we're out of luck.
Yeah, because we'll be grandfathered in if we do it before May 1st.
Right, and the thing is, is we can, you know, I don't know if y'all are going to be meeting in person from now until then either. And this would not be an essential function of government.
Well, if we, we, I got enough sense to know there's two things they're going to look at down there. But then that lobby is down there too, putting the pressure on. So I would think that it's just like anything else. Let's get out in front of it. We can't go wrong with getting out in front of it. We can show suffer if we don't.
Right, and you know, the thing is, 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 you know, talking with Spencer and Mr. Williams, excuse Mr. Williams, and, and he is a bright guy, and he did point out that, you know, hey, if you do this, there could be some lost revenues on the tail end. And I get that. But it's not just coming up with revenues. It's also providing a cost basis analysis for that.
And the right of way.
In the right of ways. And like I said, that was done extensively in Bestavia, and they were, they were coming up to $450, which is not a much different than, and you consider the price of property there and here.
Let me ask this, Lee, I think you addressed it earlier, but if, if we adopt this today, and if we do find out in months down the road that we are going to miss money on the tail end, can we unravel this and go back to where we don't miss that money?
Well, yes, you can always amend an ordinance. Now, the only thing I would point out is this, and I don't know the answer to this, is if we pass this, and then we get, and then the state passes their bill, and we get grandfathered, to what extent can we monkey with our ordinance and still keep our grandfather status?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm in agreement with Ben, that I think we'd rather be safe than sorry, but I also don't want to give up the farm, so to speak, if it turns out. But it's almost like, which is the, the worst outcome?
Right.
Say evil, but they're not evil, but which is the worst scenario for the city? Or where's the most risk? And I think right now, I think it's on the front side and not the back side.
And what I, you know, what I would much prefer would, would be to, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I can't, I don't, can't read tea leaves in the future, but if we, you know, if, if legislature doesn't pass anything, I think to some extent, I always prefer to have agreements, contracts, with the telecommunications provider.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think, you know, because you do have some constitutional protections on both. Now, in Georgia and in Mississippi, the, you know, the, any ordinance is world rule. It just so happened, the league was able to, you know, talk any exception for ordinances in this, in this, in this bill.
Most important thing to me, not so much the $200 or the four, which is good, but where they put them.
Yeah.
The right of ways. I remember when they wanted to put the poles up in a lady's yard. Well, you know, it's ridiculous. We got to have in place to be grandfathered. That's all I know.
And, and it, and it's, it gives us flexibility. I mean, it's like, you know, they want to put it on this X.
Yeah.
But there's not be about a 10-foot radius, or a 10-yard radius, 20-yard radius, which we can work with. And, you know, we can work with Alabama Power Company. And, you know, so they say, well, let's don't put it on this pole, because we're thinking about re-changing this out. You know, let's put it on the secondary, you know, pole. Or let's see if we can put it on one of our light poles, or maybe on the top of a building, or some other place.
Exactly what we did back then.
Right.
We negotiated. All I know is that lobby is down there putting it on heavy.
I haven't been down there. I've been, I've been at home.
I don't have to know that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks.
So what is the pleasure of this ordinance concerning the sale?
I'd like to move to unanimous consent to consider it today.
Second.
You were the second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration today.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any department reports? Due to the Good Friday holiday, Thursday's garbage ride will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's ride will be collected on Thursday. Also, I'd just like to, continuously to remind everybody that the 2020 census is going on. And if you haven't filled out your census, you can go on, you've got plenty of time since you're staying at home. You have plenty of time to fill out the 2020 census. It's so important for our city and also for our state, because this is how money is determined as to what we get. So I encourage everyone to please, please fill out their censors. And also, we're working on continuing council meetings and putting the tools in place to allow us to meet by teleconference. And we're also researching and seeking advice to determine what actions the council is allowed to take in those meetings. So on next week, April the 14th, the council's plan is to conduct this meeting by teleconference. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.